It's election season for city government and you want to cast an informed vote. One Ogden is here with the voices and faces of the people stepping up to represent you. Alicia Washington is a candidate for Ogden City Council at-large, seat A.
Raised in Leighton, I will say that I was born in Ogden at the old St. Benedict's Hospital. So like old-school Ogden, right? But raised in Leighton because both of my parents, I mean, my dad was a civilian contractor for 32 years at the Hiller Force Base. Then my mom was a medical secretary for forever. And so they wanted to find a place that was close for both of their commutes to work at the time. So raised in Leighton because of its proximity to Hiller Force Base. But Ogden has always been a destination. It was always a destination for me when we were growing up. And my grandparents ended up living in what's now West Haven. So it was kind of good in-between. And I remember like the origins of the Hoff Festival or the Hoff Festival that happened and Ogden City Mall and the Treehouse Museum. And so it's always been this space that has this rich, rich access to entertainment, to culture and to history, especially the Union Station. I mean, my Aunt Mary would come down from Oregon and we'd pick her up from Union Station when it used to be the train station. So Ogden has always been a central part of my life and of course graduating from Weber State University.
Were you one of those that wanted to leave at one point? You thought you were going to get out?
Ogden always has kept me like rooted in what my strongest skillset is, which is community and being a part of community and seeking community. So I remember going to Weber State University and it was back in the days of more clubs, you could say, in Ogden. And so like me and my friends, we'd always come down to Ogden to hang out. Or I've seen the successes of really renowned theater companies in Ogden when I was in junior high and high school that kept me rooted in Ogden, like it was Utah Musical Theater. So it was attached to Weber State University. And I had access to a professional theater company that was, like I said, regionally known, if not nationally known, that that is where you work as an actor. So that started to make those connections of you can have a profession here in Ogden in the way that I saw myself in the community. But with graduating from Weber State University, with my undergrad in musical theater, I started to dip my toes a little bit outside of the state to see if I could make my way back to Broadway or to a coast. I never moved out of Ogden though, once I went to Weber State University. It always kept calling me back. So I'd go to these different, they call them cattle calls with like theater. And there was just this pivotal moment at an audition in New York City. It was for the musical In the Heights. So it was in the mid-aughts where I was typed down and there were eight other people in the room after hundreds of people in this small room. I mean, Midtown, New York City, and we're all going to get it, right? And so I was typed down with eight other women and we all had the same physical characteristics and we knew that they were looking for the specific character to replace. And I just looked behind me and I looked in front of me and I'm like, this is a really cool experience. And when I got in the room, I was able to audition for one of the original music director of In the Heights. And it was a great audition. I didn't land the role, but what it secured for me is I want to do this in Ogden for, for forever, for as long as I can think of. I want to take this experience that I had and bring it back to Ogden. And that was actually kind of the start of my business, Good Company Theater, by design, starting it in Ogden. So there's a whole, whole little things that you can take from that whole conversation, but I knew it was always Ogden for me. It just kept calling me and there's such strong placemaking that happens here. And I think that's also having different, held different careers here in Ogden City. One of my most prized is a barista. So all of these years that I worked for Grounds for Coffee, it was up in Leighton on Highway 89, but then the owners of that store opened, well, they purchased Wise Bird Bookery and they had a coffee shop in there, Grounds for Coffee as well. So I started to get to know the community, right? And as I'm putting all these pieces together of placemaking and community building and seeing myself opening a business in Ogden, that's what brought it all together.
I used to love that place, Wise Bird. That was like people would go meet there, the morning breakfast was all kinds of...
Exactly, exactly. I think, you know, and then I worked at Cafe Mercantile. And so like being a barista and also like shout out to all the service industry workers, like you are all the backbone of any city and in particular Ogden City and your work is so valued. We all create these third spaces. Like you had just mentioned that every morning you might be the first person that someone talks to outside of their immediate family or their fur babies, you know? And like you get to have that exchange even if it's five minutes. You memorize their order first and then their name, but you become a part of everyone's lives, even if it's for a brief moment or for these extended conversations that happened over coffee in the morning. I recall so many times people coming in and talking about what was happening in their neighborhood or in the community at large and engaging with them civically in those conversations because we all believe in this city so much.
And so you studied theater and you opened a theater?
I did, yes. So I received my undergrad, like I said, from Weber State University in musical theater. So I love my degree and I think I put it to use every day. And then years later, I opened a theater company. But that was, like earlier I said, I thought I saw myself going to a coast and being on Broadway. But having that pivotal audition to say like, I want to help bring this to Ogden, Utah, was also built on other successful businesses or organizations that I've seen. I mentioned Utah Musical Theater, but also like Carol Jennings with Universe City, which was a gallery that was downtown and Bickering Sisters just opened in there. So I mean, it's a space that has a lot of love built into it. It's right off of 25th and Washington. But in college, we were able to do like performance art pieces down there. I'm really thankful they weren't recorded because you know, like very experimental in the way that you envision like theater kids being in college. But it was important to have that space. It was important to see that the community came down to support the arts and to support this business that was opened by a beloved family here in Ogden City. And so I've seen that success. And then you patch in the success of the ownership that I was able to experience working at different coffee shops and the different leadership roles that those owners instilled in me, which was such a point of pride. And then seeing how I was able to interact with the community that I knew starting a theater company in Ogden was where it was at. Of course baked into the history of Ogden with all of the arts and entertainment that happened, but that has happened across decades, centuries. But I knew that Ogden valued community building in the spaces that were on 25th Street and surrounding 25th Street. Now I know the city is much bigger than just 25th Street, but that's our main vein. And so when I wanted to start my theater company, I knew being not only around 25th Street, but on 25th Street was vital, but also immersing myself with all the businesses that were already on 25th Street. And so it was going in and delivering flyers about Good Company Theater. It was going in inviting employees to come see a show, to have like an Ogden night where other organization leaders, business owners, employees could come and see contemporary theater. And so that really rooted us in a community and also helped me engage in the community in a broader way.
Is there like a word or was it intentional? Is the theater at Good Company kind of more, I don't know, with a purpose, kind of more with a theme like some of the other theaters? There's like Utah Musical Theater is doing Emmy, but I feel like the stuff I see at Good Company is kind of serious. Is that, is that fair?
Oh, serious. I don't, I will take serious, thank you. But I mean, like when it comes to Ogden Musical Theater, for me, all theater is serious in the sense that it's one of those spaces that brings community together, that tells stories, that allows audiences to see themselves represented on stage. And it's such a blessing to be in a city that has several theater companies because everyone is going to take value or see value and see themselves represented in different ways at different theater companies. And so if I provide that space, if Good Company provides that space where people see themselves reflected in the works that we produce, awesome. If it helps people gain understanding of maybe, or exposure to a particular story or a particular character that's encountering something that they haven't considered before, that's incredible because that all builds up this, this community that we love.
And so then what made you decide to get into politics and run for city office?
It was actually the evolution of Good Company Theater as well, right? When I knew I wanted to invest my, my life, right? Living in Ogden, working in Ogden, starting a company in Ogden. That was all done with deep regard and deep respect to a community because I wanted to know what was going on. I wanted to know what was going on outside of my business because we're all an ecosystem that supports each other from right when you enter Ogden on the south end of town to when you come up to the north end of town, right? We all support each other in our neighborhoods and our businesses where we spend our dollar. So I, I knew that, well, I, I charged myself with knowing what was on with the community as a whole. So as a community member, as a business owner, as a resident, as a community member, I started to bend my ear towards city council. I started to say, okay, if this road closure is happening, how is that going to affect people getting down to the business? Or if I want to, if I have someone in town that's visiting, how can I get them to X, to Y, to Z or what, what should they be seeing, right? So you just, I just started to listen to city council meetings more intently and then also the opportunities that presented itself within the city to be more involved, like being a part of the Arts Advisory Committee. For, I think it was about three years. I'm recalling the length of time, but I know it was between two and four years. And really starting to see the inner workings of how decisions are made within the city and then also always valuing the impact that a community member's voice has at a municipal level. Of course, like we participate in, in all branches of government, of all levels of government, but at a municipal level, really seeing that immediate direct impact that it has. I've always been involved and interested in community organizing. One of the first, one of the first forums I ever put together, and I feel like this is so telling. Little more background, it was always expected that we voted in our household, the way that my, I was raised with my sister, my mom and my dad. We always knew when it was time to go vote, they took us to the ballots. We were raised in a home that was always politically informed, you could say, and community rooted. So it was never a question for me when I was so excited to be able to vote. So I was, I was about to turn 18 when I could first vote. And being raised in Leighton, there was an initiative going on about nuclear waste traveling through...
Groundwater.
Yep. And so I actually just think it was being transported truck-wise, right? That it would go down I-15, forgive me if I'm getting the streets wrong, the interstate's wrong, but it would pass through Utah. I'm like, wait a minute, but I, I don't think this is okay. Granted, this was early aughts when I graduated from high school, so take that for what it's worth. But I, I reached out to several representatives within Leighton City council members for them to come and have an open forum with the community about this initiative that would be on the ballot. And I think I ended up having about, we'll say six or seven representatives from the city come and talk about this issue. And then maybe 20 community members from a flyer that I put together and passed around neighborhoods. And it was held in my choir room. But I organized that and my teachers, the principals were supportive of it, which was so great. But then I got to vote on it like a month later and that was incredible. And I don't remember the outcome, which sounds terrible to say, but I knew I, I was an informed voter at the time. And since then, I've always had my pulse on what's happening around me from a municipal level up, knowing that we can affect that change.
And did you ever think about state or federal office?
No, no. When it came to deciding to run for city council, I've, speaking of those barista conversations, right? And as a business owner and helping out with community initiatives like Do Right by Marshall White campaign, the Town Hall Conversations on Race. A lot of people started to ask me questions that what was happening locally. And I started to realize, oh, I have, I have ways in which, let me rephrase that. I have found ways to keep myself engaged in what's happening locally that I am now encouraging people to follow these different websites or the city website or go to city council meetings so they know what's going on with their city. And people started to reflect back on me like, oh, have you considered running for office or oh, have you considered X? And I always kind of kept just putting it to the side, to be quite honest. Very content with my community involvement in Ogden City and in, in larger ways, in different ways. But then once I started to work on people's campaigns in different ways, like Priscilla Martinez, like Taylor Canute, Katie Matheson when she was running, I started to become more acutely aware of the process of running for office. And I'm like, okay, I'm going to bookmark that and maybe one day I'll run for office. And I started to take different, go to different trainings like with Women in Politics up in Salt Lake, right? Or Utah Women Run. So it's like gathering all this information. Maybe it's my theatrical training, but I waited for that moment where it's like, it's going to, it's going to hit me like a spotlight that I'm going to run for office. But for this cycle, it was just a gentle, it was my, it was a warm blanket, quite frankly, of an invitation to be like, you should, you should really think about running for this cycle. And it's never been aspirations to go to state or federal. And that completely reflects back on my stance of how important and vital and directly affects community members running at a municipal level and serving at a municipal level.
And so what would you say are probably the biggest issues among voters or that you see right now in the city?
I mean, as like you're trying to like thumb through the Rolodex of everything that's going on, right? Number one, the restoration and balance of power between city administration and city council to fix our infrastructure and to invest in our neighbors and our neighborhoods, not displace them.
And so can you talk about how, like, what government's role in those kinds of things are like, like what are the appropriate ways for government to sort of try to have an impact on people's lives?
I mean, it's, it's in, in our money, in our Ogden, our land and in our voices, right? So when you, I would say walk out your door, but even within your home, you're looking at things like your water bill, your property taxes. When you go out the door, if you're choosing to take your, to ride your bike around town or to get into your car and drive to work, to taking, to taking public transportation, to where are our grocery stores located, right? Do we live within walkable cities? Streetlights, infrastructure in general, like water safety and water quality and water supply in relation to the pipelines around town. I mean, it's all interconnected and that's, I would love for people to continue to investigate the ecosystem that is Ogden City and how we are affected directly by these decisions that are coming out of the municipal building downtown.
Let's see, I want to get more into some of those. Like, like talk about, I don't know, restoration and you know, I don't know, is there, is there maybe a right way to think about some of those things like transforming our downtown or transforming Union Station?
I think transformation is an interesting word because transformation can result in something that is data-driven, that is community-minded and, and sensitive to the community that it's rooted in, right? And then also if that transformation is trying to displace or gentrify or improve. And it takes a lot of critical analysis and deep conversation within city council, we'll localize it to that, to look at the aerial point of view of what's going on for that specific project. I mean, we can look at just three that come to, to mind, the Aspen House, Union Station, and then Marshall White Center and Golden Hours. We look at the negligence that's happened specifically with the Marshall White Center, with Union Station, and in some regards, Golden Hours. When we look at the, how powerful like transforming a space can be, is that placemaking happening for an expected audience, you could say, or community members that you hope to drive in? Or does it enhance the quality of, of what's already existing there? Like with Marshall White Center, gorgeous facility, long overdue. It took years of people dedicated to going to city council meetings, to writing elected officials to say, please do your due diligence in upgrading the pool, in upgrading the facility. I mean, even the ADA requirements that were so out of date, right? And it took the city too long to come to the conclusion that we need to not only restore, but completely redo the Marshall White Center. But now there's some issue surrounding what community it's serving and that's a price point issue. We look at Union Station, right? Our beloved Union Station that is the anchor of our city, that is the creation of our city, right? That I hope doesn't get to the point of disrepair, that more studies and more, I want to say respect, but also like investigation is put into what needs to happen with Union Station, not just from a Make Ogden Plan point of view or the downtown plan, the master plans, but preserving the character of our iconic Union Station so it serves our downtown and our community in general. Because tourists do come in to see it. We have these beautiful locomotives, historic locomotives that come through. But what's, what's the programming? What does the programming look like once a restoration or rebuild happens like with Marshall White Center? And then with Aspen House, what a flop. What an absolute flop. What a complete mismanagement of a very accredited and securely funded project from Weber Housing Authority that ultimately what happened was a lot of closed-door decisions. That the community on either side of, of the topic, whether you agreed with the housing or not, a lot of misinformation and lack of transparency happened in that decision-making process from our elected officials. And now housing, townhomes are going to go there that are in a very specific price bracket.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. So let's get into some shout-outs now. Who are some people or organizations in the community that you think are having the most impact?
Again, forgive, forgive this, like most impact is dependent on, right? The community, they serve the community as a whole, but the direct impact that those participants receive is sometimes we don't see that and that's okay. However, I do value all of them. I worked for YCC for about four years on their crisis response team. Incredible organization. I will go back to that position again. The position itself on the crisis response team is to work with different agencies like forensic nurses. So when a call-out happens that someone has been sexually assaulted, that we would go and meet with those victims or survivors as the first people that they met with after the crime happened. I hold that position incredibly sacred. It was incredible to watch all these agencies come together to support this individual and to help them, number one, be heard, two, to start the healing journey that also connects a lot of resources to what those next steps or that healing journey is, or just to be present with them in that moment. So always YCC, which is Your Community Connection, Family Crisis Center. I, Youth Futures is an incredible organization that's located downtown. Another shout-out is going to be to Ms. Sarah with the Northern Utah AIDS Coalition and the work that they do downtown. And then I also want to shout out Patrick and his work when it comes to literature within our community. He is the owner and founder of Happy Magpie Bookstore, which he decided to move forward from. And he still has an Ogden like write club. And it's not necessarily designated as an organization, but it's valued within our community, like branches all the way out in our community because it's one of those spaces that people can go write and share their love of literature or have their entry point into literature, poetry, spoken word. And then someone else that I want to shout out is Isaac with O-Town Kitchen and the work that he does.
And what about favorite local businesses that you like to patronize?
I will always try to spend every dollar that I have in Ogden City. Because the value of that dollar going to our small businesses within our community, we know how important that is. I, going over and being able to have fresh produce from Urban Prairie Agriculture with Anne over by the Marshall White Center is incredible. I also love Rosa's Cafe. Are you kidding me? Delicious. And then usual haunts are Coffee Links in Ogden, of course, on 20th, but South Ogden for their cuisine, a little bit of an extended menu. I love that most of our organizations, our businesses also have this branch of being like organizations like Lavender Vinyl and the work that they do within our community. Pearl, Pearl Tea Milk Club is incredible. There's just so many ways to stay engaged in this community through these businesses that we support. And maybe people aren't aware of like these little ways that they show up for our community, like Tanya with Los Churros del Norte. And she has the opportunity that you can pay a meal forward and then someone just comes up and takes that ticket and just presents it to her. I see Ogden showing up for each other everywhere that I go in this city, whether it's from a megaphone to just like a, a... Whether it's from a megaphone to just like a, a, a moment to be in the park together. Ogden always shows up for each other and I love that.
And so um what's the best way for people to get ahold of you, find out more about your campaign, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I mean, my name is Alicia Washington and I'm running for Ogden City Council at large, seat A. They can go onto any one of my social sites, Facebook, Instagram. Uh you can Google Alicia Washington. Uh the website is electalicia.com and my email is up there, my phone number is up there. Uh and then I have some meet and greets coming up and then also just some opportunities to hang out in the community together.
Go to oneogden.com to view written responses to candidate questionnaires from all the municipal candidates we've interviewed and to find interviews from other candidates in Ogden, North and South Ogden, and Roy. Please share our interviews with your friends and encourage them to cast an informed vote and subscribe to the One Ogden Podcast to hear all the other Ogden stories we've been digging up.